This meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Here.
Ms. Gadsden?
Here.
Ms. Shum?
Here.
Ms. Stagel?
Here.
Ms. Ameca?
Here.
And so, we will, oh, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for this meeting.
Still move?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. Any changes or additions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Shum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Okay, well, so, we're here for a work session. Next, we have our study topics, presentations, and discussion for the state of the district with an academic update, so Dr. Hall.
Today, we have a presentation with our administrative staff and also a teacher's collaboration from them as well, going over our summer school and also our academic report card and some different things that we're offering within the district. So, I'm gonna turn it over to our curriculum and instruction director, Misha Baker, and she'll walk through a slideshow of current status of the district.
All right, all right, well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I should've put my glasses on to see the buttons. I think we're good now. Hello, hello? There we go.
You got you.
Then I'm gonna drop it off. So now, good afternoon. We are going to go ahead and get started with our presentation, as Dr. Hall said. This is, it's a collaboration, a combination of things that we have started, initiatives we started, and things that we're gonna continue, and maybe some new things that we're going to embark on. So, let's go. Our district goals. We have had the same district goals for a few years, cultural humility and equity, systems of support, being academic and social, and our chaired instruction. One of the things that happened last year is, we had initially had tier one instruction, and as we worked through our strategic plan meetings last year, we had at that, in our spring meeting, we talked about, is it truly a tier one? We know we wanna focus on tier one, but we don't wanna ignore tier two and three as well, so that's when we talked about just saying tiered instruction. Oh, well, look at that, didn't really fit as well. Trainings. So, one of the questions that came up is, what trainings do we have for our staff, for our new staff, our returning staff members? We had an intense training for our new teachers this year with our onboard. Mr. Nielsen, worked with them on technology, distribution, resources, technology safety, best practices, programs that we have. We had Angelica Davila, who came in and talked about social emotional learning, self-care with our students and our staff, and then student family services and pantries, and then also with being mandated reporters. That's a big one right now. It's really reminding everyone of our responsibility to be mandated reporters when we see and hear anything that's happening in our school community. Mr. Ible talked about our policies, whether it be Title IX, building access, job router, and HR kiosk, and those are how people put in their professional development times, how they call off. We had Ms. Miller talk to them about RESA and mentoring. Along with that, Kurt Russell came in and talked with them about building relationships and mentoring as well. Curriculum, I had a conversation with them about our curriculum cycle, how we request materials, how we request to go to professional conferences, the steps and stages. Ms. Miller also talked about attendance, report cards, how you put in grades, how you do student attendance, and how you document discipline and family contact. Ms. Alec came in and worked with MTSS overview. Finance, Mr. Reinhardt and Corinne Schombach talked about time cards, public works, trainings, benefits, attendance, and then we've had our community agencies come in with Dr. Hall. I know you're like, well, we can read that. I know, but I know that some people may not be able to see what we were doing. It was a lot that we did with our new teaching staff.
This is actually a new initiative this year. Normally, in the past, we have our, have them come in, go over a half a day piece, and then try to give them a classroom to work as soon as possible, but we decided, based on our data and information that we had from new teacher input, they wanted some more information about more onboarding of community agencies, how to write grants, who to get a grant from, policies, RESA mentoring. So, we did a half a days and also allowed them to have time in the classroom as well. So, our teachers, our new teachers come to school three days before our regular teachers do, per their union contract. So, this is actually a new initiative to provide more information. Also, an opportunity to meet Kurt Russell to talk about the importance of building relationships as well.
Can I just interject? This also aligns with the communications pillar of our strategic plan, so, thank you.
Yep, 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 yep. So, we've-
Misha, I'm sorry, can you remind me what RESA is?
RESA.
RESA.
So, RESA is, when our new teachers are hired, you know, back in the day when we got hired, some of us who have only been teaching for five years, maybe more, you just got your licensure, you got a provisional. Now, it's called a RESA, is because that's the opportunity, they have to do, it was resident educator, so there's a resident educator program, and they've gotta do some sample lessons, they've gotta work with a mentor for three to four years, they've gotta take an assessment, they've gotta do some videotaping and turning it into the state. So, it's a lot more work to get your permanent, or your five-year licensure, so you don't automatically get it anymore, you've gotta do the work and pass the test and meet with your mentor before you can move on to that next step of licensure. And so, we've had a very, Oberlin's done a really good job with holding monthly meetings or every other monthly meetings with their new teachers to ensure that they're understanding district policy or curriculum materials and getting them ready to videotape their lessons and/or take any assessments they may need to take. So, trainings, we continue, I've got a lot of trainings for you, 'cause I know you asked, what are we doing to train our people? So, literacy, when you're looking at any of the new news that's coming out from the ODE, Ohio Department of Education, a lot of it is centering around literacy and the dyslexia law. And so, we have House Bill 436 that requires all of our teachers in K through three and our special education teachers, K through 12, to have a minimum of 18 hours of professional development. There we go. Of professional development centering around dyslexia and literacy. And so, we had already got ahead of the game a couple of years ago when we started letters training with our staff. Letters is approved vendor for these hours. And so, we are now about 60% of our teachers have that 18 hours, and probably about 40% give or take have 12. By the end of this year, if they're here on those days, they all should have completed their letters training. Then, we have our middle school, they're doing keys to literacy. Keys to literacy has sections of their program that also align with the dyslexia law and our literacy regulations. So, even though we are only required to do our K through, what's it, K through, K through three, and then K through 12 intervention specialists, we're actually going to do, we're training all of our teachers K through eight on literacy. We have three people who are currently going through training to be certified dyslexia specialists in our district. The state of Ohio requires that you have one person, we will have three. We'll have two people done by the end of this year, and one person will be done by the end of next summer.
And how do they divide up school-wise?
So, what we did is, sent out a survey to ask who would like to do this, 'cause we are paying for this training, intense training, through our literacy grant. And we had about maybe 20 people who wanted to do it. Once we started holding our information session, they started dropping like flies, and they realized that this was intense. It's a course, it's a practicum you're gonna have to do. They said, no, I'm not doing it. So, we ended up having probably about seven or eight. Then, we did another information meeting, and we ended up with three people who came, four people who came. We have, one is our literacy coach, Kristy Walter, we have another title teacher at the elementary school, and we have a district-wide staff member, our EL coordinator teacher, who will be doing it, so that she can support there. We've talked about actually opening it back up and created another cohort now that we have some newer, some new teachers, and maybe some, and I won't say new teachers, 'cause they may not be new, but they're experienced, and they may want to do this training. So, although they're only required to have one per district, we say, why not have as many as possible across the district? But we didn't have as much interest in our high school, and then those who were interested in our middle school, they just kinda said, a lot of them said, not right now. So, we are looking to open it back up. But you'll see that we are working on the science of reading. We started this before the state said, hey, why don't we take a look at the science of reading? We were already there saying, let's do this. And we still have a lot of work to do with it, still have a lot of work to do with it. No questions there? All right. You know I can talk a lot, so I'm gonna try to, before I get that cut sign. So, we're still on trainings, because they had a lot of trainings. Within our math, as you approved us to purchase our new curriculum for math, so, in June and in August, we've had trainings for our math teachers and those who support math. We will continue to offer trainings throughout the school year, it's not just one and done. So, they're gonna come out on some of our PD days, and we also have some scheduling that will be done, and they will come in during school days and work with TBT teams and looking at the data and determining how we're using our instructional materials as well as assessments. Science, we had Dr. Peterson came in and worked with our science and STEAM teams during our PD week to try to align some of the initiatives that we have, how can we better support each other with the dashboard and beyond the dashboard? IB, IB is our big one, right? So, how are we giving people the IB training? Typically, in Oberlin City schools, we do not train people their first year in the district IB, because you don't know, they may leave. You're spending thousands of dollars on someone who may leave the next year. However, you know, you never know what's gonna happen. So, two years ago, two years ago, we trained everyone, we brought IB here. This summer, we've actually had a lot of our DP, which are our high school teachers diploma program, go to trainings, and what we're attempting to do is continue that. Language is our ELA, we have our teacher who teaches ELA has attended trainings for DP, we'll continue that. Spanish, she is registered to attend training this year for DP, she's never, as long as she's been here, has not attended a training, so I have her scheduled due to training this year. We're also looking at a new curriculum for DP. Digital Society, which is a form of our history, she completed the training already, and we purchased new curriculum for that. Biology, they are attending a training in November, and we are also purchasing new DP curriculum for that. Busy. See, I've been here, what, 25 days, and we're already making things happen? We're trying, trying. So, theater, he has attended training, and there is no curriculum that we could purchase that aligns that, but they've worked with him on creating lessons. So, out of our nine students who were candidates for IB and across the stage, six of them fulfilled all the requirements to receive their IB diploma.
So, that means that six of them actually did get the scores necessary-
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep, we have six who made the score. So, within our training still, special education, we've had, a lot of work we've done this summer, the administrative team, looking and reviewing with someone who's kind of helped us kind of audit our own stuff, and what we've learned is, we need to do some work on giving our teachers and our administrators some professional development on IEP writing, implementing transitions, implementing the strategies, the interventions, the goals. And we also have a transition coordinator, Amanda Coachman, who will be working with not only students who are identified as special education, she'll be working with quite a few other students on, what are some of the life skills that you need beyond high school? Career workforce, as part of the state of Ohio's initiative for 2425, students are gonna have to graduate with 250 hours, whether that be workforce or internship or something that they have to document. We've already started that process, we'll continue it. And so, what has happened is, Danita Talper-Brown has a new course that she's worked with, excuse me, with Rich Moore, and developing, that they're giving our students that opportunity to figure out, what do I need to join the workforce? What does my resume need to look like? How do I need to do an application? How do I interview? What are some, where's some places I can go to network? They're bringing presenters in and speakers in to kind of gauge them, doing some job-type of shadowing. And then, college and career navigator, Rich Moore, we've talked about before, he's working grant-funded through the ESC, he's supporting us, and he's helping a lot of our students who are like really struggling with, what do I do next? What is my next plan? I don't know that I wanna go to college, I don't know that I even wanna finish high school, and he's helping motivating them. He's up at 5:00 in the morning working with students. He's, late at night, he's at the school building, just kind of talking to students and helping them figure out what courses they really should be, 'cause sometimes our counselors are like, help, help. So, he's really jumped in and helped us get a lot of students back in the building.
Misha, can I just clarify? I just wanna understand what you're saying. The new requirements are that every student has 250 hours?
So, it would be one of the things that they, one of their graduation pathways, a lot of them have SATs, SATs. Our goal, I'm gonna tell you, our goal is to get every student to have 250 hours in whether it be, and it's not just your senior year. So, you'll have, you know, from high school, your whole high school career to do it. Our goal is to get you 250 hours in whether it be work, or some type of community service, or internship.
It's not required for all the students, but some is one of the pathways they can acquire. We like to work with them on that, and that's from working at McDonald's to community service at First Church, a lot of different hours we have, we just have to find a system now to start logging those hours in.
And that's the big one, is how do we log it?
Teaching kids how to fill out job applications and do interviews, that is, that is real-life-
It is.
I'm 100% there, I just didn't, I was trying to-
It's a lost art, like, we lost it, we lost it.
This might be getting into the weeds too much, but what do you mean by as one pathway? You mean to graduation?
Well, when, when we have, and we'll talk about it a little bit, when they look at our report card for our district, they'll say, how many students have you prepared for the workforce? How many students have you prepared for college? How many students have taken the SAT, the ACT, have possibly enlisted into the military? And so, they wanna know, are we preparing them for the career and workforce? And so, they'll ask us, what pathway have we helped them and assisted them, and we have to give them a number. This is how many students are on this pathway, or we've given them multiple pathways. I don't know if that answers-
Next year on our report card, you'll see us, not this year. It was only a couple of years, about college career pathway and work, but the state have changed it and right now currently revising it. So, that's huge for the state currently right now, in trying to get students to join a workforce, community service hours. So, the following year, you'll see 250 hours as one of the point systems on a report card. They would also have to do Ohio means jobs, different things like that, rise up its own credentialing, students that take the IB tests, all those things will be on a report card the following year. So, this is one way, one of some of the students can require seals as well, and you notice, like, last year, students had seals for their report card, their report card, I'm sorry, but their diplomas.
Transcript.
So, they had different seals for community service hours, different things for various different seals they could acquire.
But will these hours or this pathway replace any of their academic requirements? Like, to give them another way to graduate?
No, no.
Okay, it would just be something else that they could-
And some of them have already started this, and here's the thing, this is 2324. This goes into effect for report cards 2425. We are part of Ohio Department of Education. Between now and then, this will probably change. I mean, it's a, it's, and you know, we're trying to get ahead of it the best that we can, right? But, you know, we know that they-
Yes.
You know, the practical thing is, let's start the process, and then if we have to change it, at least we already have a skeleton of what we can do.
Now, some of our students use Ohio means jobs and rise up as a different pathway to graduate, they have to read certain criteria to do that instead of taking the test. So, special circumstances, we utilize that for them as well.
All righty, so, Safety Violence and Education Act, House Bill 123, states that we have to train our staff on safety, threat assessments, suicide prevention, and in, we will be doing, wait a minute, we have safety teams, sorry, I got ahead of myself, got a little too excited. So, we have had teams of teachers that have attended the trainings, and I shouldn't say teachers, our staff members have attended trainings. There's a team from every building that has attended this training and is prepared to really work with their staff on, what do we do in a threat assessment? What do we do to prevent suicide? So, we're ahead of the game on that, I don't wanna say ahead of the game, but we're doing that, and we have already had our staff attend the training. Child sexual abuse and sexual violence, this is Senate Bill 288, and we have our staff sessions, our staff will be offered this training from January 2024, and we will conclude it in June of 2024. So, there will be some in-person parts of it, but there'll also be some online with our Public School Works part of it, and it is required that we have those trainings. And let me hit it this way, so, when it first came, you said, okay, that's okay, we'll just bring someone in, we'll do the trainings, and everyone will be trained. You have to, either, the person has to either be a prosecutor or work with law enforcement and have had experience with child, with sexual violence and child sexual abuse. So, you know, it tied a lot of people's hands with, your resources that you had here are now limited here with working with your prosecutors and then working with your law enforcement on their timeframe. But what we were able to do is work with other school districts, and the fact that there are modules that have been produced by law enforcement in conjunction with prosecutors that we could utilize. So, we will be doing that. And then also, our students will be attending sessions, so people go, oh, what do you mean about that? Our Second Steps program already has a unit and lesson on it that is student-friendly, and before we would even have these conversations, notifications always sent home to the parents for them to decline. We've had parents who've said, no, thank you, and the students were able to go, you know, into another classroom or do another activity. It's not a punishment, but they would be able to go somewhere else, but we always offer that to our parents, and that notice will go out in a timely fashion.
So, the reference here to House Bill and Senate Bill, is that because these have not been enacted yet, and we're trying to prepare?
So, right, so the House Bill has, but the Senate Bill, you know, they're saying, this is what you're doing, but you've still got some work to do. But we're gonna get ahead of it, because, you know, if this is what's coming, we're gonna be prepared for it. Cultural humility, we had another, we had a half-day session during PD week with cultural humility, and Dr. Knight came back, and the topic this time was bias in ourselves, recognizing who we are in our workplace, in our community, and, you know, how do we turn it around so that we're equitable in that we were able to be honest and honor our own person, who we are, but at the same time, be respectful of that and other people? Branching Minds, Ms. Alec will talk a little bit more about branching minds a little bit later, but our staff has been trained in branching minds, our administrative team and our staff teacher leaders. And our MTSS teams and teacher leaders are currently training, some have had, I know the elementary schools had already had a session, the middle schools had a session, they're training them on how to utilize branching minds, they've already started utilizing it. And that is our warehouse of data, where we keep the data and where intervention plans will be posted, listed, documented, and people will have, be able to access this, access it there, update it there, and if I wanted to, as a district administrator, log in to see how many students we have intervention plans with, I can go in there and see, are they active? Are we doing them? So, we can actually go in and monitor the work that's being doing, being done. Gifted, so, we started a little, yes?
What is branching minds?
It's a storehouse of data. It's just like, it's like a company that comes to you and says, hey, I have this system that I can take every piece of data that you have and put it in a program, and when I put it in there for you, it blends it all together, so you can see who's struggling here, who's doing well there, and if you wanna create an intervention or enrichment plan, I have a storehouse for you to create that plan and put it here, and you can monitor it here.
So, what data's going in that storehouse?
Social emotional data, test scores, data-
Social emotional data, eye-ready data, state testing data. They could put testing, unit, I'm sorry? Yes, all the, yes, but he wanted the specific names, so we're doing our eye-ready, the state test, social emotional, so when we do, youth truth data goes in there, any of the assessments that we give students, that data goes in there. Gifted. Gifted intervention specialists, got them together, the elementary school and the middle school, and said, how do we, how do we kind of take a look at what we're doing with gifted a little bit differently? So, they are signed up to go to trainings, to work on project-based learning, to work on writing the webs, those individual plans for students, so that they're individual, and it's not just a cut and paste, so they'll be doing that. Uh-oh, I hit something. We're also going to, they're gonna go to some information sessions that are part of our county-wide competitions, 'cause we love those. And when I say that, we're working not in separate buildings anymore, we're working collaboratively to combine the two. So, this won't just be Langston going and participating in Young Authors, it'll be Oberlin Elementary School participating in that as well, the students. So, these are some of the sessions that we will be doing, we're already signed up to participate in these or to attend the sessions.
Math 24 is a competition?
Yes. So, Math 24, I don't know if you remember Math 24?
Yes.
So, they brought Math 24 back. And so, Math 24, for those who are not familiar, Dr. Hall asked me, are people gonna know what Math 24 is? So, it's, you know, it's almost like a card game, there's a card and there are four numbers on it, and you have to figure out the different combinations of, like, you might be the, who has the highest number? How do you take the numbers and either add, subtract, divide, multiply, exponent, or whatever else, so that at the end, you get the number 24? So, they've gotta use some of their math fluency. So, they brought it back, so, the competition is back, so they'll be excited about that. With our administration, I didn't wanna leave the administration, administrative team out, sorry, I'm all over them, my mouth is- But we're working with our administrative team in all of those trainings that we've talked about, like, our administrators are part of all the trainings. But also, we're working on really deep diving into the evaluation systems that we utilize to make sure that we're consistent from building to building. And people don't feel like, well, I didn't get it this way, how come you got it that way? So, we're working on really being consistent, in our language, consistent in our process. Woo, moving along here. So, now we get to that curriculum, right? So, we have, you adopted a five-cycle, five-year curriculum cycle in 2021, and this year is our math implementation. We've purchased it already, we are doing PD, and we're implementing it, we'll continue with PD. We have increased in a little bit of enrollment, tiny bit, compared to what we had at the end of what we thought was coming in, it's not a lot, don't get excited, but it's enough that we had to purchase some new books. So, we've made a new purchase to make sure that all of our students have their materials, and we've aligned with the ESC and an implementation team that's gonna come work with our elementary school and our middle school to just kind of ensure that we are utilizing the resources with fidelity and see what other support they can give us. This is our review year, study year, pilot year for our electives and specials, all pre-K through 12. That's a big project, 'cause we're talking about art, music, everything from pre-K through 12, where this year, we'll be meeting with all of them, we'll start on October PD day. We'll have the specials people all come together, and they will be divided into their specialty area, and if they're alone, they will work with them. We're gonna review their current curricular resources, we're going to go out to other sites, other districts to see how their programs are utilized, we're gonna review some curriculum options that are out there, we'll pull some in, and then we'll try to pilot some if possible. I know that, you know, the requested priority areas were Spanish and STEAM, we're doing all of them, however, we know that those are the hot-button topic items in the district right now, especially with Spanish, talking about that vertical alignment. What's happening, you know, are our kids, when they leave Oberlin Elementary School, able to have a basic understanding of some of the language before they get to middle school? How about middle school to high school? So, we've gotta talk a little bit more about that vertical alignment and how we strengthen that. We, they're getting Spanish from preschool up to, you know, eighth grade, 12th grade, we should have a stronger vertical alignment. On top of that, time of instruction has been a question. We have done some surveys, Mrs. Hicks has done a great job of doing some surveys with students who went from middle school to high school, and talked about semesters versus year. We're aware that there are our community members who prefer the year, there's research out there that says the year is great, there's research out there that also says the semester. We had about 65% of our students who felt that they were able to retain actually more information when they went each day, opposed to when it was spread out during the year. So, we will take a deeper dive into that and look at it again, we could be wrong, right? STEAM, we're looking at that K through A curriculum. We, a couple of years ago, played with some different options, and then we went and said, let's develop our own, and I think we're at the point now where we really need to go look at some streamlined curriculum to see how it could align with the goals that we have here in our district.
Can you send me the Spanish data that says that it's-
Yeah, I tried to give it to you when we met in June. Yep, I sure will, I'll send it right over to you. So, now we talk about the report card. Report card and changes for the state report card, the Ohio Department of Education report card. So, before you get all excited and say, that's our report card for this year, no, it's last year's. So, last year, and there's a reason, 'cause I wanted to give you what it looks like. Report card is no longer a letter grade, they stopped doing that in the previous report cards. It is now stars, and you can see that the ratings there from the five-star being significantly exceeds, four-star exceeds, and what it means, exceeds expectation, you're meeting the goals, you're exceeding the goals, three-stars meeting, two-star needs support, and one-star significantly needs support. This was last year's report card that came out in September, October of last year, and this is where we were with achievement, and achievement is the component that represents whether student performance on the state test, that's state test, that's our state testing data. So, when you look at last year's report card that came out in the fall of 2022, it was for the previous school year's testing data. And we had four stars, so we were meeting those expectations. Progress, um, at that time, it was performance compared to expected growth. So this is where we expect you to be compared to where you, where you actually are, and we were four stars with exceeding. Gap closing, they used the same information, it was our, it was our overall. How are you closing gaps with your testing data, with your attendance, with gifted, EL, graduation, all of it, combined, and we were four stars. Graduation, and this is the tricky one that people will kinda fall off with me here a little bit. This graduation, when you're looking at the report card, like I said, that was released in last fall, it was not for those recent graduates that June. It's always a year behind in graduates. So this is for graduates from the 2020-21 school year, if that makes sense. And then early literacy, they compare fall of 20 to say, hey, did children grow when you looked at their fall of 21 data? And we had three stars there. College and career workforce, military readiness is a new title, they changed it a little bit, but there was no rating and that rating will not come until 24, 25. So that was last year's information, just kinda wanted to give everybody a gist of where we came from. So as we look at our report card data, previous report card data, historically, I think it's important for people to know where we came from. In 2018, 2019, that was pre-COVID. Our report card is what you see on the left. Achievement was a D, graduation rate was a B, gap closing C, improving at risk K through three readers was a D, and prepared for success is a D.
And these don't directly correlate to the stars?
That's what they said.
No, there's different measurements for it, things like that.
The formula is a little different.
So it's no correlation between the two, but you can see some achievement that's gonna happen.
So when you look at our graduation rate there from a B, that actually, they were looking at, um, a co- combination of our four and five years, but then when you look at our last year's, that was only for four-year graduates. So, and the formulas can change each year, it could definitely change. For instance, when you look at our, um, achievement, that is based on the top 2% of the school districts in Ohio. So, if this is where the top 2% data is, they are, it's, it's your bell curve, right? So, our rating is depending on whoever the top 2% of the, the, I mean, the state of Ohio is. So if they're low, then if we're high, they kinda balance aside, it's, so the top 2% dictate what direction we're going in for that achievement section of the report card. In 2019, 2020, there was no report card, because if you remember, um, March of 2020, we shut down. So from March of 2020 to June of 2020, we were shut down, limited instruction at that time, we sent home packets and food with our parents to try to support them socially emotionally. We returned August 2020 virtually, not in person. We did not come back until January 2021 and we came back hybrid, where it was partially in-person and partially virtual, and then some days we like had, had a, no school at all with the students because our staff, they were getting prepared for the students' return. And then we returned with full instruction in the fall of 2021.
And there were no report cards because of state determination?
No report cards, because there were no tests. Mm-hmm. So now, let's talk about where we're going. This is what you care about here, right? What are we looking at? As of right now, the state report card has not been released for last year. But we were able to get some projections from the ODE of what our report card may look like when it is released. And what we're possibly looking at here is our achievement being three stars, where we're meeting. And remember, that's based on that 2% that we go up and down. Our progress, we're looking at four stars, exceeding expectations. Gap closing, four stars, exceeding expectations. Graduation, let's go ahead and look at each other. Two stars, need support, and we're gonna, I'm gonna dive into that a little bit. Early literacy, two stars, needing some support, and college career readiness, we already know that's not happening. So our overall projected rating would be three and a half stars, based on the information we got from the state recently. And so Oberlin City Schools, we're between meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So that's what we're looking at for right, possibly now. So I wanna take you backwards, hope that it doesn't confuse you there. 2018, if you look at achievement there, I, I'll be quiet for a minute and let you take a look at that for a couple seconds. Questions?
Have the requirements for graduation changed in those different years?
So it's not that they've changed, it's not that they've changed, but it's that question that, you know, Farah has asked. Talk to me about learning loss, talk to me about the impact of what COVID had on our students. And we have a small population of students. So one thing that people don't understand about graduation, the graduation rate is determined by what's called our cohort. So that means it's not just who graduated, who was in that senior class, it's every kid that came into that building with that class from ninth grade to 12th grade is part of that cohort in graduation.
Even if they only came for two weeks or a semester?
We have a child who enrolled, who never showed up. And they are still part of our number because we can't locate them anywhere in the state of Ohio.
And you're, there still are us until someone picks them up somewhere. And no one picks them up, they don't go to school, they're not ours, it's still ours.
So they're ours.
Cuz like, my kid graduated in 22, and that whole class?
Well, your kid, this is not your kid's year. So even though the report card is 2022, it would be the year before your daughter. So think about this, this is that 2021 year, remember, that's the year we came back only halfway through the year. And we have a lot of students who chose not to return back in person, and some of them never came back. So we have some that didn't come back, we have some that left in 10th grade, some that left in 11th grade. Um, and when you look at our number, our four-year graduation rate for, keep in mind, remember, this is that, uh, 20, 2021 group, was 87.9%, and then the five-year was 92.9%, right? Weighted rate that they gave us, I know, you know, Dr. Stanley, it doesn't really add up, I had to go look at their formulas, cuz I was like, that's not an average, but when, when they use their formula, it is 89.9%, which gave us two stars. In order to get three stars, which was meeting, you had to have 90%.
This is where the details matter.
One, this is where we talk about it, right? That's that one student we talk about. So what do we know about that year? What specifically do we know about that cohort? We had eight students who did not graduate with us, eight students who either withdrew or dropped out, and we could not locate them. Or we did locate them and they just weren't, they weren't coming back here. So those eight students impacted that, that rate. So what are we doing about it? What do we do? We already started this process and I'm gonna show you how we know that it's working, how are we measuring it to know that it's working? We have targeted home visits that started previously, we had to say, hey, we gotta go to some more homes. Increased connections, one of the things that Talbot Brown is doing with some of the business as well, is we're having these conversations where we have our students that are working with you and they don't come to school cuz they feel like they can't miss work, can we talk about shifting hours? Right? Not necessarily decreasing, but can we shift some hours? Can we work together to figure out how to make this work for our students? Communications with students and their families immediately, cuz what we sometimes have is they'll fill out the withdrawal paperwork, they'll give it to us and they'll leave. No, what we started doing is let's contact them by the end of that week, that same week, talk to me, did you actually show up? Let's contact the school that they're supposed to be going to, did they actually show up? Where are they at? Is that address correct that they gave us? And then within 30 days later, having that same conversation again, to make sure they're still where they said that they were gonna go. Um, and then, at this point, we have our new college navigator, which I said, Rich Moore is really working with a lot of our students. We had one student who was leaving, he was able to sit down and talk with the family and bring the child back. Like, so, you know, that's what we're, we're trying to do here. So what did we learn? I'm giving you a sneak peek into what next year's report card would look like in, for graduation. Cuz the great thing about it, since it's a year behind, we already know what our next year's report card would look like. We have four non-graduates. So, before we had eight, we had four. Now, when you look at this, two of them are exchange students. Megan Cafaro, our EMIS coordinator, is working with the ODE right now, the state of Ohio, to figure out how do we code this differently, because why would we be hit and hurt because we had two exchange students who couldn't graduate with us? Right?
And they didn't come in, though, in ninth grade?
No, but they can't, any, anytime you come in. You can come in the last day of 12th grade and you're now our cohort for that group.
So some of those other eight ones were also exchange students?
Yep, they possibly were, yep. So do you see how, so we're trying to figure out, how can we code this differently, work with the state of Ohio, because, you know, you want us to have the exchange programs, but you can't smack us in the face with it and ding us. So, if we know that four are two exchange students, we have one who will be on a five-year graduation plan, who is still with us at the high school and will graduate in five years, and we have another one that we have chased, and I mean chased, I mean, I put hounds out on it, we, we chased, we did, myself, Dr. Hall, Megan, we found her, not coming back, okay?
We're not done yet, I'm still gonna try to.
He's, he's still working on it, he's still working, he's still trying to convince, we can get you on a five-year plan, come on now, stop. So, you know, really, and I think that's doggone good, and that shows that the work that we've been doing this last year, now that we knew where we were with the report card to get there.
What if, um, a, a student drops out of Oberlin but gets a GED? Does that help us at all or no?
So, I don't really know about that coding, I'm gonna be honest, I'd have to find out from Megan how we would code that one, because technically, they, they, they have a GED. And that's the ultimate goal, and I think it would be coding, and I don't know if it would hurt us, um, or if it would stand as a, and I can find out.
And we would have to find out whether they receive a GED or not, because when students go to another school, it's easier to record, because somebody picks them up and our system picks it up. But if they go get a GED, I'm not sure if we'll be able to get that information from that student when it happens. That's the hard part, is when they leave here and place on a form, they're going to Liria or Lorraine, and there's no tracking system of, did they ever show up? Three months later, they may show up, or they just may not come back to school at all, or they may go to another state, you don't know. But we did a great job here with, um, those four non-grads, as you can look at the data. This is also the time period, Rich Moore came on board too, as our college career navigator, uh, working with the students to graduate and meeting kids at six o'clock in the morning, um, Saturdays, um, after school at five o'clock, uh, going to their jobs, getting them to turn in work. So we've started a great job of trying to track them down a little more.
Helping find transportation to get them to the school building, I mean, putting that extra work in. And I think that, you know, we've done a great job, there's, there's a lot of great work that's been done. And if you look at, you know, someone's like, why do you have the subgroups up there? I think it's important for you to see the work that we've done with many of our subgroups that we struggled with getting graduated before, and.
People are part of multiple subgroups.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yes, yes.
Yep, yep, yep.
So for this 2023 cohort, it says on there that 100% of black students graduated?
That's in that cohort, yes.
That just graduated black, this past June, that will be on next year's report card in, um, 2024, yep. So, you know, it, when we look at the, the two that we're gonna possibly get on our report card in a month or a week or whatever it comes out, you know, know that we don't like that, however, you know, the work has been put in there to improve upon it, and I think that Oberlin City School staff has done a remarkable, remarkable job to figure out what we needed to do differently to correct it.
We have 100% of our student disabilities, economic disadvantage, and 96.6. Did a great job, the whole system did a great job in that 2023 cohort. We're not done yet, I'm, I'm still tracking this one down, we're gonna, I'm gonna track this one.
They've also been having strategic action to close gaps, yes, too, right? I mean, so, it's working.
It's working, it's working.
And I want an asterisk for those foreign exchange students?
Right, don't you? So don't, you know, imagine when we were looking at it and we're jumping up and down and I think, you know, super product, we're yelling across the hall, the, the office, Megan, find those kids, can't we call, how come they can't give them to us? Tell them to take it off. So, you know, it was, it was rough, you know, cuz it made you feel better, because you knew the reason why, the rationale, but it still kinda gut hits you cuz you're like, come on.
And we couldn't just give those exchange students a diploma, right? Cuz they didn't jump through all the.
They got a special.
No, they got a special, it was a participation, yeah. So, I mean, we really need to look at, what does that look like for our education? Like, you know, really working with the state and say, hey, we really have to look at what are the requirements of our exchange students and how that affects our report card and graduation, yep.
And this isn't final either, so we're still working behind the scenes and trying to clear out the exchange students and some other students as well.
So she's still working with them and I, you know, because like I said, this is recent graduates, but this is next year's report card, she still has some time to really work with them to see what we need to do with our four, yep. Alrighty, and then this is the last area, I think this is the last two slides for me, and I'm sorry, I know I've taken up almost an hour, um, but I think this is, this is deep work, cuz this is what, we wanna know where we're going with our academics. Our other area of two was early literacy, and that one, sometimes, you know, it's, it's hit or miss. What I wanna preface this with is, early literacy is our kindergarten through third graders. So if you look at last year's third graders, this is this group, last year's third graders. In the year 20, uh, 22, 23, they were in third grade. Second grade was 21, 22, that was the first year back in school. 2021, half-year, hybrid, they're in what, kindergarten? Preschool, there was, we were shut, shut it down? So, you know, when you look at our thir- third graders, our second graders, our first graders, when we talk about what was the impact of COVID and not being in school, our kindergarten through third graders right now, those are the true ones who are, we're seeing it. So when someone says, what about our fourth and fifth graders? You gotta remember, they were impacted as well, but at least they had a foundation year of kindergarten, a full kindergarten year in school, a full first grade year in school for those fifth graders. Whereas we're talking about our third, second, first graders who didn't have that option. So, you know, but that's where we are. So what, what happened? Higher number of students entering school not on track, students were academically further behind, um, increased number of K through stu- three students who were identified as needing special education services, increased social and behavioral supports in pre-K through three. And we've talked about that a little bit before, like, you know, we know that, that's social emotional, we have an increase of students with anxiety, students with, you know, some, um, attendance, some behavioral concerns, just environmentally uncomfortable being back in school. So we know we've had an increase with this, so we had to get on board. What are we doing? How are we intervening? Mrs. Weber's doing a fabulous job of starting tutoring earlier for our, our grades one through five. Usually we start in January, February, we're starting in October this year. Kindergarten will start in January, why are kindergartners starting so late? We know that kindergartners developmentally aren't ready for that impact of all of that right now. We have to teach them how to be a kindergartner and the basics, foundation of schools before you start throwing extra hours on them, an extra time. Smaller class sizes, yes, smaller class sizes, and then we're working our new RTI process, um, yes, Dr. Stanley?
Yeah, so, so, obviously, you're the expert, you think it's wise to put kindergartners in, uh, kindergartners have a very long school day as it is. I just really question, you know?
Whether we should even offer them an after-school tutoring, even in January, okay?
Yeah, that just seems like, you know, kindergartners don't need a longer day.
And we've talked a lot about our kindergartners and what we're giving them and what they're able to handle.
I trust our staff.
So that's definitely something that we need to take into consideration.
The other thing that I think as a board I'd be interested in watching is our performance versus others', um, other districts. I know that we were far more conservative in when we came back.
Yes.
And the impact. So, I'm not expecting to see apples to apples.
Okay.
But I expect to see lower rates in, kind of across the board in the state, and maybe comparing ourselves to other schools that were kind of equally cautious about coming back, um, so that we're comparing as closely as we can.
I agree with that, and I, and I thank you for recognizing that, um, because some people are like, well, I understand, you shouldn't have a gap, like, it should be, it shouldn't have been that big of a deal. It was a big deal. It was a big deal. Um, and so I definitely appreciate you saying that, thank you. And then, so if you wanted to look at some data, 'cause I know you like data, right? Um, like some data, this is what we were looking at, when we talk about what does it mean? The Ohio Department of Education has some great calculations. And so when they calculate our report card grade for literacy, thirty-five percent of the grade is represented by how many students were promoted to the fourth grade by passing the test. Twenty-five percent of the grade is how many students improved in literacy, and that's where we got hit. We had twenty-two point four percent who um were able to improve upon their literacy. But if you take a look at, you know, the grade levels, look what happened with kindergarten, we already just said this, we know this. And then forty percent of the grade is how many students were proficient on their third-grade state test. And we have sixty percent who are proficient.
So that one hundred percent means all of the students promoted to.
Right, they, we had a million different tests that they can take, right? And so there were six different tests that you could take during the school year, and I wanna say different to make it look like we gave kids a bunch of tests. So their I-ready test counts as a possible for you to be promoted with that score, your state test, third graders take it twice, state of Ohio. Um, so that's five ways, and then in the summer, for students who haven't made the cut, we actually offer summer third-grade reading guarantee, summer sessions to come in and to work with them on skills, and they get to take um another assessment to see if they've made it. After we've administered our assessments, we were at a hundred percent. Now, we we kinda got into a conundrum, 'cause we had one baby who withdrew, who didn't initially make the cut, but she came back to us. And so now we're like, okay, well, you know, she's working at the level as all the other ones who had to take the summer sessions. Yeah, I, she she was gone.
She kinda like skipped over it, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Exited when we were, okay, and then came back, okay.
Yep, 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 yep.
I guess I'm confused about the only sixty percent proficiency. I I guess I thought that they had to pass that to go to fourth grade.
They have to, so proficiency is different than being your promotion score. So proficient, we say, let's say seven hundred, promotion score maybe six eighty-three, can't remember the exact number, six eighty-seven, six eighty-something, six. So that's the promotion score, promotion score is different than proficiency score. So that's how they get us, they give us a proficiency score, you get a promotion score, you got an increased gap score. So sixty percent of our students were proficient on the the state test.
And proficient is reading at grade level.
Yes.
Or above.
And writing, so it's reading and writing, it's your literacy. Mm-hmm, yep.
Now keep in mind, that's gone, the legis- new legislation, there's no third-grade guarantee.
Retaining, so that changed over the summer. Over the summer is now if you don't pass the test, we don't have to retain you unless a parent wants you retained. But we have to note it. And you still have to take the test.
And what's the point of the test?
Yeah.
Well, what a test is.
Your tax dollars at work.
So, here's the thing, we know that we can use the test, we know we can use the test to gauge understanding and learning. However, if you're changing that parameter, I I definitely understand what you're saying, but what would be the purpose of giving a test to say if students are being promoted or not, if you're not using it for promotion? That's a conundrum.
Well, your license data for other purposes as well.
Right, so, and then this was, this is actually my last one, I promise. Um, one of the things that we were talking about is growth versus proficiency, right? So you were just talking about proficiency. So we know that although a lot of students were not proficient, well, I shouldn't say that, we had quite a few proficient. We had a lot more growth than we had proficiency, and why would that happen? If we're talking about, if you look down at the bottom um percentages, we had seven percent of our students who were three or more grade levels behind at the elementary school, and this is K through five. So seven percent were behind three grade levels. By the end of the year was three percent. Sixteen percent were two grade levels or more behind in literacy, and, you know, it was ten percent. So you would want larger gaps, when you're talking about being two or three grade levels behind, you're you're, you may not see that proficiency, but you'll see that jump in growth. To have forty-two percent that were that were one grade level behind, we moved to only twenty-one percent. And then eighteen percent were on um early grade level, and then that stayed eighteen, but seventeen percent were mid or above grade level, and we moved to forty-seven percent that were mid or above grade level by the end of the school year. So I just wanted to make sure that we, that I explained, when we talk about growth versus proficiency, we may not have the proficiency in some areas, but we've had the growth of a whole grade level for quite a few students.
What are we comparing though, like, what years or?
This was last year's I-ready, this was last year's I-ready scores. This was um fall to spring.
Fall versus spring, thank you.
Well, I'd just like to go back to the, there is a fundamental reason for social promotion, which is that if you've got a a fourth-grade aged child in a third grade, um, what you have is that that child is gonna be the most respected child in that grade. They are a year older, they're bigger, they're gonna be the most respected, and they're also gonna be the worst behavior. Not exactly, but so, the research shows that it doesn't help the child, and it doesn't help the rest of the group, and I see Sue. So there is a reason for it, it doesn't sound right, why are we promoting these people, the kids that don't, but it actually doesn't help them, and it doesn't help the cohort to hold them back.
No, and it doesn't, so we don't, so, you know, it comes to, do we need that, we want assessment data. But do we need so much assessment data that you created to retain a child, that you're no longer gonna retain a child, so then do we need all of that assessment data? We need some of it to dictate where we're going, but do we need all of it? And I told you a fib, I was fibbing. I got some other fibbing. So, um, report card, and I'm gonna start walking away, 'cause it's to let you know that I'm.
But I think, 'cause I think we might be changing.
This is it, this is it. So just wanted to let you know that there were four categories of report card, we, after every three years, they evaluate your, all of your report cards and say, where is your district? And Langston was a priority school that basically said they needed a lot of intervention and support. Um, we had warning schools, target schools, and no identification means you're growing, we don't need to even mess with you. And so that was three years ago, this year, not one of our schools has a designation. And so that's letting you know that all of our schools are going in the right direction according to the state of Ohio on the report card.
Well, I got a question. Don't try to run away, I don't, I know you've been up here.
I was running.
And if somebody needs to answer it, that's fine, but, so when we're talking about these students that are not proficient but are promoted, what are we doing with them when they get to the fourth grade?
There you go, so that was, uh, we had a nice little conversation, didn't we? So our students, they have, they will have reading improvement plans, we have, the title teachers will be working with them, we have some after-school sessions that will be happening with them. Um, we're using all of our community resources that'll be coming in for sessions, and I.
That's a great segue to MTSS as well, because those students will need tier one, tier three interventions.
So that, I mean, I'm only a small part of the presentation, and we've been here an hour, I'm so sorry!
Thank you.
Wait, are we are we catching some of those students that were three grade levels behind with this new dyslexia law?
That's the goal, that's the goal, is because now we have people who are experts in this, who can help us really look at the deficiencies and really get more honed-in help.
I also like to state that some unfunded dyslexia law, but that's fine.
More things from the Ohio Department of Education, yes.
Well, I mean, we we are funding it.
Yes, yes.
We're blessed that we have the, we have our literacy grant that's helping fund a lot of our our initiatives here.
And I'm hoping all of you are aware that ODE is changing its name. It's now gonna be the Department of Education and Workforce, which is kind of their whole goal, what they're working on, and what are students doing after high school, so. Yeah, so they're they're not quite sure how they're gonna get around to do all that, but they're figuring some things out, so. Thank you for letting me come back again and talk to you about MTSS, 'cause I was here last year doing that, and I brought some friends with me who are gonna help today. And so just kinda giving us a definition of what is MTSS, and a lot of what you just heard Ms. Baker say, the interventions that we're putting into place for our students that are at risk for graduation, that's MTSS. A lot of what we're doing with our TBT, our RTI meetings, that's MTSS. So a lot of the things that we're trying to put into place um fall under this umbrella of MTSS, and if you think about it, it's it's really about how are we changing the systems of what we're doing to improve student outcomes? So if you kinda look at those five things there, that's kinda the fifth one, which is kinda the ones that I I focus on, but it's also using a lot more collaboration, and the big thing is focusing on tier-one instruction. If we can get our data showing us on I-ready, that in the fall, when we're assessing students, we're at eighty percent in the green, that's telling us our tier-one instruction is working. And right now, we're not there. So that that's telling us the needs, we have more needs for supports and more needs for collaboration, and part of what we're trying to work on is our our communication between buildings, between departments, and things like that, so we can can make some headway. Uh-oh, I guess I'm in charge, I asked to be in charge then. So just kind of a review for you, uh, what we've done with MTSS, 'cause the state was charged with doing something with MTSS back in twenty fifteen, and they're just getting around to getting their MTSS plan together right now. And they're gonna be starting to roll out some professional development through their state support teams and educational service centers that will participate in. But we've kinda started um prior to that, because we knew we needed to kinda look at how we were doing things. So in twenty-one and twenty-two, we had representatives from each building met with me and our curriculum director and Mr. Nemany, and we tried to, we kinda worked through this this workbook of, it's called the MTSS Startup Guide. How do we make sure we have all the systems in place to make sure what we're doing is gonna be sustainable? So no matter, you know, who's in the curriculum director role, or who's the superintendent, or who's a principal, that we make sure that these systems are in place, and it's how we do business in Oberlin. So um things wouldn't change. So uh in June of twenty twenty-two, we had a three-day retreat with all of our um building team members, and then uh last year was kinda their first year as a building team, each building has their own MTSS team, and they really focused on those structures and supports, and trying to see how they do, how they can do things differently, and what they need to change. Um, and so this, right now, we're into year two. As part of our retreat, we wanted to come up with our definition of what MTSS meant to us. Um, 'cause if you look out there, and we studied other schools, we looked at other districts, other states, kind of what they have, we wanted to make sure it fit us, and it fit our mission statement and our vision statement here in Oberlin, and kind of like our core principles of what we want. There was a lot of wordsmithing going on, we had a few English teachers there. And so we really had a a good time trying to come up with what we really felt was important about it. So this was kind of our definition for MTSS, for our team to work off of, and for them to take back to their buildings and work with that. When you look at the kind of supports we wanna work with for students, if you look at that bottom layer, that differentiated core, that sometimes is called tier one, that's what all students get. We're really trying to put that word differentiated in there now, because the gen ed teachers have to differentiate for their students in the classroom. And we really wanna focus on that differentiation, 'cause what you might do for a few students, you might know they need that, but other students can also benefit from it. Different ways that you can show what you know, different ways that you might assess, you could take a test orally, you can take it in writing. You could have three different ways that you might do this homework. You might make a slideshow, you might make a video, you might write a report. So just trying to figure out ways that we can differentiate within the classroom. Some of our students, based on our data, our I-ready data, our our state tests, need more support, that's that supplemental support. So that's called tier-two kind of instruction. A lot of that ha- happens and can happen in the gen ed cla- gen ed classroom. So our teachers should be doing that, we need to be building up their capacity to be able to do that within the classroom, so students don't have to go someplace else to get services, they can do that right within the classroom. And then the intensive support, that's where you're looking at tier three, which might be a very, should be a very small group of our students. And it's like, they they need something different than what's going on, but they also still need that tier one, they need tier two, but they need tier three also. So that's kinda what we're working on to develop those things. We can't just say we're doing it, we've gotta put schedules and systems and people into place, and that's kind of what the teams have been working on. Here's just another way of looking at that last graphic. Um, so tier one, if you start at the bottom, that's the gen ed classroom, that's all students. Teachers are using universal design for learning, which is what I just described, differentiating a lot of things that might work. And then we're using the data for that, our screeners, our attendance data. Tier two is the gen ed's classroom, some students, again, it's targeted intervention. So if you have students who might be a little bit behind in a skill for phonemic awareness, you're doing your regular lesson for all students, but you might need to catch four of them up for something, so the gen ed teacher's pulling them aside for five minutes or ten minutes a day and doing that for three days a week to try to catch them up. And then tier three, again, is our alternate setting. So sometimes those are social skills, sometimes they've got, their curriculum is so different than what other students need, that we need to be able to modify the curriculum to an extent, so they can have access to the curriculum that way.
Quick question, would that mean the student would not be in the gen ed classroom at all, or?
We typically don't have that for all day for students, it might be part of the day. If you need your reading curriculum, your reading instruction at such a different level and different pace, then that may happen where you're in a different setting for that, but you might still be in all your specials with your your friends and your your gen ed class, but it's just usually part of a day. 'Cause some students may need be at tier three for math, but tier one for other subjects. They might be at tier two for behavior, but they might be at tier one for everything else. So we're trying to match what the students need um with the kind of supports that we can provide them. So on this uh this guide that we use, the startup assessment, there was a uh a self-study survey that each building took in in June of twenty twenty-two to determine, out of the ten indicators, two points the most you could get for each indicator, how did you do? Where was your building at ready-wise to be able to say, we've got everything in place and our MTSS structure and framework is strong? Um, so you can see where they were in June, they did the assessment again in twenty twenty-three, except asterisk for OES, because they had a lot of staff change and principal change, they're doing it this month to do theirs, so we'll get an updated score there. And then they'll do that again in June of twenty twenty-four. Please remember that this is like a five-year process. When you look at RTI, to try to do everything and make sure systems are are in place, financial supports have been put into place for staffing or for programming or whatever, it's usually looking at a five-year process.
A five-year process for implementation.
For having everything ready, it's not like you do MTSS, it's not, it's not like an implementation, it's, are all the structures and frameworks there, so that you're gonna be successful with how you support students? So um, a little clarification, so what are those ten indicators that they look at? Like, first one, do you have an MTSS team? It's kinda hard to make sure you have supports in place if you don't. Um, some of the other ones that looked at is like, um, looking at, did we need to make some changes to the, like, the class offerings we were offering? Did we need to make some changes to schedules for teachers, so that they would have some common planning time? Some of those things we already had into place, um, and if you want copies of those indicators, I have them here, if you would like them. And then, one of the ways, there there's several ways we can say, is MTSS, is what we're doing, is this successful? We can look at graduation rate, what we just talked about, all those interventions we're doing to try to make sure all of our students are here and are counting. That's an intervention, that, I could put that up here as this. This is one little piece we looked at right now, um, besides the the school self-evaluation for how they're doing. So we looked at attendance data from twenty-one and twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. Not much change there, attendance rate for students. However, the absent rate, which is if you missed ten percent or more of your school days. So we had twenty-six point seven percent of our students missing that in twenty-one, twenty-two, we've decreased that to twenty-one, almost twenty-two percent. So there is a decline there, it's going in the right direction.
So that means that in twenty twenty-two, one, twenty twenty-two, twenty-six percent of the students on any average day missed an hour or more of school. Is that what that, I'm just trying to understand the.
Ten percent of the school year.
Ten percent of the school year, so twenty-six percent missed.
Of the school days, yep.
Ten percent or more.
Seventeen days, something around seventeen days.
Okay. And then ninety-one percent.
And some of that could be like they had COVID too. So some of that could be they had COVID, some of it was they were absent and not coming, and some of them.
Absence for any reason.
Absence for any reason, yeah.
It's like, we want them to stay home when they're sick.
Right, but we also wanna make sure, we know some kids were able to come for part of the day. They were going through a lot, struggling mentally, and some of them left, or signed out, or parents signed them out for part of the day. So you add all those things up, this is the percentage that we had, so. That's a piece we're keeping in mind of, as we're looking at things and we're looking at students, how do we keep them engaged? So a lot of these supports we're doing is trying to make sure our students are here, so they can get access to the curriculum.
And we want them to come, we would encourage them to stay home, but then again, the other flip side is that the state penalize you for them staying home, so. Uh, especially during COVID, we tell them they're sick, they're ill, please stay home. Right now, we're working on the various interventions to try to get them down instructional pieces as well.
So our number of suspensions decreased from sixty-four to fifty-nine, that's another component we're looking at, because we're trying to find alternate ways to keep kids in school.
This is across the whole district?
Yes.
So what are we doing this year for kinda focusing with our MTSS? One of the things we realized, and and Ms. Baker alluded to this in her presentation, is that we need a systemic way that we are able to store our data about students, look at it quickly, and be able to plan and and do some progress monitoring. In the past, um, I can remember when I was a principal, you would have your data, you do it, you had to make your hand make your spreadsheets for it. So that can take a whole lot of time, and then when you do it, then you've gotta sit there and figure out the analysis of it all. We have found a platform called Branching Minds, which you guys so graciously have provided the financial assistance for, so thank you. Um, that allows us to have the students, we've got all the students, we've got their scores in there. We're able to say, know what tier they're at, based on tier one, tier two, tier three for academics, for social, emotional learning, be- based on some of the aperture data that we have, and we're able to look at um what kind of interventions. Intervention plans can go right in there, we've got their state test scores in there, we've got their I-ready scores in there. So it's kind of a a one-stop shop for teachers, where they can have information about their students quickly at a glance, but then we can also put in there, what are our intervention plans? So our intervention plans are going right in there, and we're working on that piece right now. So our teachers have had some training in it, they had a one-hour overview. Now that we're getting our fall data, they're gonna each have a PD, two-hour PD session, each of the buildings um in October, to look at that data in depth, to find out how how do we go about utilizing this, what does this tell us?
Well, so so when I heard the description of Branching Minds, all the data that I heard going in there were standardized tests and this and that, and and I I don't wanna put more work on teachers, but I actually had this rare view that teachers actually know more about their students than the than the standardized test scores. I just wonder if there's a way to to get that information from the teachers in addition to all those standardized test scores.
There is, there's progress monitoring, there's things we can send to teachers, where they can give us feedback back on it. So if you'd like, I mean, I'm happy to sit down with any one of you and just show you the system, and show you what it can do and the things, and we're still learning all the capabilities of it, and we.
So there is some way for teachers to feed back and say, well, you know, they just had a, they just had a bad day on those days.
Absolutely.
So like, if I have a student who's having a hard time, and I go into Branching Minds, I'm. another teacher may have said, sometimes this student has trouble because of X, Y, and Z, and this is an intervention that I've done that has helped.
It will historically keep the interventions that we've done, and it will graph our interventions for us to see if they're effective, if they're not effective. And it will have that kind of progress monitoring data in there. So it's a one-stop shop, so we can say, it's in here. We've got, it's got a host of interventions we can pull from already that are in there that we might not know about. We can also take some out that we don't want them, our teachers to see because there are certain ones that we might say, eh, that's not vetted, and these are the ones we really want to focus on for behavior or for math or for reading or for writing. So we're able to kind of, to work at that piece and then be able to gauge our interventions appropriately from that. So our intervention plans for students would be right on there, right in the system. And so we're able then to track the data. It's got the social emotional piece in there too, so our aperture data will go in there. So we're able to intervene with students who's got social emotional needs too and intervene quicker, hopefully, as we're looking holistically at a student. It's kind of a one-stop shop for all of this, for what we're trying to do to support our students. So that's one piece of it. Another need we have is also our PBIS, our tier one, two, and three behavioral supports and interventions. We want to kind of try to reduce our suspensions. But we also realize not only new teachers that we have on board with us, but we also need to be looking at what are those tier two and tier three interventions that we can put into place for students? So we know that that's a need. And then the third piece there is improving attendance. So using the attendance report and being a little bit more proactive for students who are not here. When we can have them here, we can work with them. If they're not walking in the door, it's really hard to put interventions into place for them.
Does the attendance data go into Branching Minds as well?
Yes.
I believe it's in there, yeah. Yes, it does, because if they're.
Everybody's nodding.
I'm sitting there looking at, I'm trying to picture the dashboard so when it comes up of what it is. It does in terms of in there. If you're, I think it's 90% or more, or 90% or more, 90% or less. 90% is your target to be there. If you're absent more than 10% of the time, we've got a red flag that goes on up there too. So.
And that's based on hours, right?
For them, I think it's days. I don't know that they could switch it to the hours on their platform.
Super C's.
Steve's on it for us. Steve has been very, very important in helping us with his implementation of Branching Minds. So I'm going to turn this over now to our representative from each of our teams because our buildings have all been working on MTSS, and I want a representative from each of the buildings to talk to you a little bit more about what's going on with their buildings. So Kristy Walter is here from the elementary school.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
So I'm just going to give you an update at the elementary school. We have been hard at work on our teams and establishing our systems within our elementary school. So last year, we accomplished those three items. We made sure that we had the stakeholders that are represented on our MTSS team. We had it kind of narrowed down, and last year, we opened it up and involved more people. So we have our, I'm going to look at my notes before I forget. We have multiple grade levels, we've got our content areas, we've got our counselor on there, and our coaches are on there as well. Our title teachers are a part of our team, so we have all those supports in place to support the whole child, not just specific areas. Something else that we accomplished last year was aligning our data collections to each of our meetings. So each month, we met and we had a topic of discussion that one of us would be in charge of presenting to the team, getting feedback, analyzing the data, discussing next steps. And that was, and we mapped it out for the entire year, and we continue that practice this year. So we are, all of our meetings are set for the school year, we meet twice a month, and each bi-weekly meeting, we have a different topic where we talk about behavior, my math data, attendance data, reading data. So we have that all mapped out for the whole year, which really kept us on track last year, so that's something that we're going to continue to do. And then something else that we accomplished last year was just defining the roles and responsibility of all the members on our team. We really tried not to have, you know, Ms. Baker doing all the typing for the note, like we, those kind of meeting roles, we, you know, reestablished every time. And then just knowing, you know, what is our role as an MTS member, MTSS member? It's to be a support for all of our staff, teachers and our other staff that work in the building. So we really worked hard last year on those three things. And we're not going to stop doing them, we're going to continue doing them. And then our other focus for this year is supporting the staff with Branching Minds. This is actually perfect. This week in our PLCs, so our TBTs and RTI meetings, we, this week, our professional learning communities. So we, our whole focus for our meetings this week is diving into Branching Minds with the teachers, you know, discovering, talking about how we can implement the plans, how do we put the plans in, what kind of supporting documents can be put in? How do we include the old plans that we had last year? Because we still need to continue to do those interventions. Or, you know, maybe we don't, maybe we need to go back to the drawing board. But we're all there together as a team, doing this and working together. So that is a big focus for us this year because from what I've seen with Branching Minds, it is a nice platform where it houses everything and where teachers can also input other important data. That's important to that, knowing what that child needs. Something else we're going to focus on is establishing the progress monitoring system. So all of that can be put into Branching Minds. But right now, for a focus for us is looking at our pacing guides for ELA and math and looking at checkpoints along the way so we can have conversations around our data and being able, okay, what are we using to progress monitor? And just really shoring up our systems even more to make sure we're actually targeting the things that we need for our students. And then our third and final focus at the elementary school is establishing entrance and exit points for different tiers of support through the RTI process. And that has been something that we've been trying to work. We've tried different things, like is this going to work, is this going to work? And again, we're just going to start where we're at and then go forward. Because there's just, what puts kids on different tiers? And I think we just, we know it, we just need to all be on the same page. And just making sure we're doing again what's best for all of the kids at our school.
So the data that you referenced in two for the focus for this year, establishing progress monitoring systems, where is that housed right now?
Right now, it is, we have it like for the RIMPs, for example, the reading improvement monitoring plans. All of that progress monitoring data is housed in the RIMP document. It's a Google sheet and down at the bottom, like that's where that is housed. For other RTIs that are in place, it's housed in their intervention plan, which is another separate document that we have to go in, and all of the data is documented in there. With Branching Minds, it's going to take all of that, we got to go to Sheets to go to this, and we got to go to a Google Doc for that. It will all be housed in one spot now. It'll actually be much easier to have even specialist input data and document things that they're trying in the classroom too.
So then that data, is it being transferred over yet?
It just hasn't been merged over yet. And that's something that we need to focus on. How are we going to do that so it is easily accessible to everyone? Oh, we have our pacing calendars too. Thank you, Mrs. Lover. We have pacing calendars that we worked on at the start of the school year for ELA and math, where we had the, all the teachers pace out for the entire year their academics for CKLA and for the new math program. And then along the way, we put checkpoints, and we're going to use the OST checkpoints for grades three through five for math and language arts. And then for K2, we're going to be using the math, and then we'll be using CKLA checkpoints along the way. That will also allow us to progress monitor our tier one instruction as well. So there's a lot of different things that are happening at the elementary school because there's a high need for us to know what's going on with all of our kids.
Sure. If Jason were still sitting on the board, he would be so excited about it.
So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We should have clapped long before that.
Everybody.
Hi. I'm Sky Kaminsky, I'm from Langston. I teach ELA. And here's what's going on at Langston with our MTSS team. 2022, '23, we were really focusing on establishing wider representation on our committee. So that was making sure that we had representation from all the different content areas, as well as our specials areas teachers, our support staff. And then this year, we're actually growing that as well to include community voices and student voices. So I'll talk about that in the focus for '23, '24. So just making sure that we really have like a holistic representation of our Langston community on that committee. Database decision-making for all tiers of instruction. So that is very similar to kind of what you heard Kristy talking about. We're using a lot of the same tools to collect data on our students and then also housing all of it in the Branching Minds platform. So that'll be super helpful. And then having RTI meetings with our specials areas teachers. So RTI is response to intervention. That didn't normally, that didn't historically happen with special areas teachers, but there are students that, you know, have needs that need to be addressed everywhere they go. So making sure that our specials areas teachers are incorporated into that. So that's kind of what we accomplished in '22, '23. For '23, '24, to help ensure having a strong representation for like student voice and choice, we're inviting student, students to join our principals advisory council. So this will have a small group of students from each grade level, work with Sheila to just kind of be like leaders in our building, but then also have the opportunity, we'll have two, two come to our MTSS committee meeting to provide student voice and help to make some decisions on how the Langston community functions. And then evidence-based interventions and responses at each tier. So this, you know, the interventions that we're doing, we have ELA interventions that we are incorporating during our RISE period during the day. So that's literacy-based interventions. We have to deliver those, we have two ELA teachers, two intervention specialists, plus a literacy support teacher, delivering some of those like more intense interventions. And then also during that time, we have our RISE honors enrichment program. And so that's servicing students that are gifted or need, you know, that extra push, that extra challenge. So, and then also, we have our Phoenix Flex time this year, which that, in that period, we have some math interventions that are available. So there'll be students that are receiving math interventions two days a week, and then also some music interventions. So if, or enrichment, students can work with in small groups with the music instructors to stretch themselves. And then the last one is just clear entrance and exit criteria for all tiers. So that, you know, we have this really great flow chart that Tiara Beard helped to make for us, and we've been using that to figure out, especially for the ELA interventions, how to work students into these different places that they, you know, where they can get the support they need. But then understanding like, once they've been in this intervention, once they've received it for a while, how do we progress them, you know, out of that and into another area? And so that's what we're really hoping to figure out this year is that exit criteria. And that's what's happening at Langston. Thanks.
What do I press? Hi, good evening. My name is David Reese, I teach English Language Arts at the high school. And some of the stuff, pardon, did I? Am I okay? I'm on there? I thought about. What, what does MTSS mean to you? My daughter wanted me to do that. It's like, no, I got to keep it serious, May. That would be May. It would be May, yeah. Eliza was at practice. But thank you for being here and for the invitation. So several things that we accomplished last year. One of the elements, so some of these are very formal, some of them are more informal. And a more formal piece was our first student, our student-teacher conference evening. For the past several years, they were just kind of okay, numbers were very low. So the MTSS team reexamined that, what it could look like. And for kind of like our early intervention night, we as a staff identified several students who seemed to be struggling in a number of classes. And instead of just doing standard, come and meet your parents, we actually scheduled more of an intervention and so that the student, their family, and all of their teachers could be there in one room at one time. And this was at the beginning of the school year. And it worked out very well, we had a good turnout from everybody. But we also had, bless you, we also had a few students who, their family didn't show up at the last minute. They committed to coming, but they didn't at the last second because that's kind of a scary thing. And even when that happened, we had about 40 minutes or so for the, for the staff who was gathered there to share their own insights. And that was really fantastic at the beginning of the year because as an English teacher, I don't often get to speak with the other teachers that a student of mine has. And we have the opportunity to learn what seems to be working and what doesn't work for this particular student. And for me personally, knowing over the course of the year, okay, this teacher seems to have a very strong relationship with them, and so I could reach out to them over the course of the school year. So that was a really helpful piece, and we're going to continue that again this year. The second item, we're Phoenix Pride Days, very informal. But the third Wednesday of the month, all the teachers would wear their Phoenix Pride t-shirt. And during lunch, we would come down and just play games of like Uno and Connect Four. And I was crushing it in Connect Four until Devin Johnson played the SmackDown and that happened. But that was awesome. And there are a number of times during the semester when Mr. Betson and a few other people would fire up the grill, and we would have burgers and dogs for lunch, and it was just for everybody. So it wasn't, oh, you know, a PBIS thing where if you achieve this and this and this. No, it was just for everyone, which really kind of was an easy way to create a more welcoming tone, you know, once a month in the, within the high school. We also had wider representation on the MTSS team. It started with administration and teachers. But then we kind of like realized that there were some voices that were missing here. So we added voices from para-pro administrative assistants. And I think that that's everybody's. So we had para-pros, administrative assistants, teachers, and administration. And we're going to continue that with our focus for '23, '24 by incorporating some student voices and parent voices. So kind of moving into, kind of like broadening the representation on who is a part of MTSS. You've heard all this evening talking about Branching Minds. So we're going to continue to look and study Branching Minds to see what it has to offer in terms of decision-making for students. The one thing that I was excited about with Branching Mine is that it does have, like as a high school teacher, it has data from elementary school teachers' tests, the state tests, as well as national tests. So that's like a really, really awesome resource that we look forward to utilizing more often. And the last element, using our Smart Pass tracker for recording, like finding data on, we use the Smart Pass information to see what students are missing a lot of class. But now we're also saying, okay, what data do we have from Smart Pass to indicate? The names of students who are in class every day, all the time. And they're not asking to leave the classroom to go use the restroom because they do that during passing period. And so what kind of things can we offer those students to kind of like publicly recognize the work that they're doing over the course of the school day? Thank you.
A quick question.
Yes.
So for the, back at number one, from what was accomplished last year, you said there were some teacher conferences where families didn't show up. Did the students show up?
Ooh, I don't think so. I think, I think it was, it was, and so, and with those, and those were like really, really more of like an intervention. And it's kind of like a sandwich approach where you kind of like start with the positive. Thank you for being here, this is scary because all of your teachers are here right now. So you have teachers, coaches, and family members. We talk about the positives, but then we're like, we're also, you're kind of struggling. And here's the direction that we want to go in, and you end with more positive stuff. And so because we had 40 minutes devoted to that, right? We want to make sure that you show up. But we had a couple who just at the last second said, something came up, and we're not coming. And even when that happened, it's, which was disappointing, but it still felt very productive because I got to be in a room with, you know, I'm struggling with this student, but I also have their other teachers here. So it was a really great session for information sharing.
Yeah, the thing I wanted to make sure I got from that is you all did not just leave. You stayed and talked to each other about the students that did not come.
Because it's, at the high school, you don't get those opportunities very often. And so when that would happen, yeah, you were disappointed, but we're not about to lose these minutes right here because they're, they're very precious.
Got it. Thank you. How many of those were there approximately?
We had them two evenings and I think it was about, was it, was it like 10 and 12?
And the great thing about, we did have two families who missed.
Sorry, Mr. Betts, can you talk into the microphone so the people at home can hear you?
I was gonna say, two of our families that missed the first round, our team committed to, so our, our panel conferences are the first conferences in the fall and the first conference in the spring. We then, when they didn't show, we met, discussed interventions we wanted to put in place. But then we called those families and said, hey, look, we care about your kid. Can you come to the next round of conferences that sometimes were just a week later? And we did have success. Two of the families did come back.
Okay.
And so which is good follow, and then follow up with those families again in the spring to check progress and talk about progress.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Yes, I did.
I'll try to answer them.
So my question is, how are we able to ensure that teachers, or I'm assuming it's teachers, are inputting the data that needs to go into branching minds to help with all this stuff that you're talking about?
Well, they're not inputting anything yet. What we have in there is stuff that we have pulled from scores from iReady. Their iReady scores go in there. Their state test scores go in there. They're kind of through Super Steve, we're able to get all that stuff right, right into the system. What's going to happen and what the training is going to be is now let's look at that and what are the interventions we're doing? And how do we, how do we put those interventions into it? There's a way you were going to sit there and say, you know, okay, here's Ann, Ann needs, needs this. This is how often we're going to monitor it and that's going to go right into the system. And so then the data for all those interventions will be housed right there. It's going to be a one stop shop. But the training that they're going to receive in October is going to teach us more on how to do that.
Okay, so then data will start to, they'll start to input after that or later?
Yes, yes, additional information. They're like, right now, the teachers are finishing up their, their iReady assessments. And so that stuff is going to start to populate. Once the window is closed, then, then they roll it over and they'll put it in there and then we'll start looking at, at the plans. But they've got a set, we've got a set window that we set with them for when that rolls in there. But yeah, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a learning experience this year for doing it. But it's a very convenient one place to go that can house a lot of our interventions that we're doing. Because think about it, when we've had interventions in the past at the elementary school and then the student moves to the middle school, sometimes it's in a folder, sometimes it's in a paper. You can pass the folder along to somebody, but then if they don't open that folder and it's meaningless to them because they didn't create those pieces of paper, it might not get looked at. Or even from grade level to grade level, it could be from first grade to second grade. No intention, nobody's meaning to not do it. It just, there wasn't a system in place to be able to, to look at it. So this will be like a, a one stop shop for it. There will be things on there, once we set up like progress monitoring for students, if we're going to say every two weeks, we're going to do this. The teachers will get a to do list, an email that says you need to do these things this week. We'll be able to monitor if they're doing them or not doing them and, and things like that. And if they're not, what supports do we still need? Because we know it's new and we want to support the teachers with the use of this platform. So we're going to try to provide that. But the, the principals are already talking about using that and, and are already using it with their teacher based team meetings that they're having. They're looking at the data that's already in there because we've pulled in the historical data for most of our students.
I think it's a lot of data too. Teachers are already, are putting in, inputting some form somewhere. So it's not like it's creating of, of a new type of system for them. They're just going to continue to put in the data for the students and it's going to just be one place for them. So it's not anything that, out of ordinary that they don't normally do anyway.
It's just going to be a, a more systematic way of doing it and one that's easier access and it won't, it's not a paper pencil one. And it's not a, oh, you've got the Excel file here, but it didn't get passed on to the next teacher. So we're going to be able to track historically what has happened with a student.
Oh, yeah, that's my, my concern is transferring data from whatever place it was stored previously and then also making sure we continue to update it.
And we'll be able to upload some of that stuff from the past, but we can't, I don't know that we're going to be able to get everything we've ever done with a student up there. So I think we're going to look at last year's information and put that in there and then go forward with what we have now. But the teacher based team meetings, that's what they're using in their buildings is looking at that in the RTI meetings. So there's a definitely a, a principal focus with those of using that with teachers.
And we're not creating new work for teachers. It's just different.
This actually is, I think it's going to make it easier for teachers. We'll, we can get the feedback from the teachers, but it's like a one stop shop for where they're going to need to go for interventions and their intervention plans will be right there. And that's kind of where they're expected to be.
And then one other question, my understanding of how this works and Mr. Reese kind of talked about it a little bit, is that there is this kind of like team that meets and talks about the kid, the student, to figure out what interventions they need. What team is that? Like who, like is it, is it the MTSS team that's doing it or is it a teacher, is that the student?
It may vary, yes, to everything. It may vary at different grade levels. At the high school, that's very unique and very what, what needed to be done there. A lot of high schools will never pull all teachers together for one student and really talk about what the student needs. So that's really been a, a nice change to see and for struggling students. And then documenting what are we doing and following up on all those interventions. At the, at the elementary in that, I think we do have some of the information. I don't know, I don't know if Ms. Weber wants to speak to any of that or, or, you know, in terms of how your teams are using this data. I don't want to be putting words into their mouths, but it's, it's, go ahead. I'm, I'll let you take it.
All right. So one of the other things our MTSS team did this summer is we recognized that we needed to have time for our teachers, a balance of TBTs, which is teacher based teams, looking at tier one instruction, tier one data. And also PLCs, which is professional learning community. So once we have that data and we analyze it, then we need time to develop ourselves professionally in the capacity of our staff to serve the needs of those students. So we developed a calendar that goes, I think we did it, we planned it out through January. I think through January, that it basically aligned all the data points that MTSS would be looking at over the year with the TBTs and the PLCs for the teachers. And that's where they would have time to input that data, analyze the stuff that's coming out of branching minds. TBTs focus more on tier one instruction. So you're looking at trends and patterns for an entire grade level. But our teachers also have a weekly RTI, which is response to intervention meeting, where they talk about the needs of individual students. This year, we're doing a cycle where they have a, a rotating meeting. So one week they're going to be meeting with our literacy coach to talk about response to intervention for students and the next week they do math. But we also have incorporated our school counselor, Ben Icecamp, and he's going to be kind of like an on call. He'll attend all the meetings, but if there's a teacher who has specific SEL concerns about a student or coming up in branching minds, he'll have individual meetings with them during that time. And use aperture data, disciplined data from the office and attendance data to support them. I hope that was right.
I'd like to give our teachers a round of applause because MTSS, where they started off from the coming this point here, it's been a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of interventions, phone calls, positive phone call home, negative phone calls home. But just meeting and talking about students. But I think it's, hats off to them and like you round of applause because you guys have done a phenomenal job.
And I think as we keep, yeah, as we keep looking at MTSS, it's also all about how are we as administrators looking at the supports and the structures that are in place? And are we allowing for those structures to be present and the ones that are needed to be there with the right staff at the right time? So that's kind of what we're doing.
And what about at Langston?
Pardon?
My question, what about at Langston? How are the teams coming together to help with the students?
So it's very similar to what they're doing at the elementary school. And so one of the things we're trying to do is be more consistent as a district. So that the elementary is not operating one way and Langston's operating another way and the high school. And so, you know, as far as collecting the information, some of you might know that the elementary school used to have these yellow folders and they'd get to lengths where they collected all their data and they get to lengths and they're like, what happened to the yellow folders? What's, what are they doing with the yellow folders? And then by the time they get to the high school, nobody even knows about the yellow folders. And so it's just trying to create a consistency in how we conduct business, how we teach, how we think about our students. So the same story that you're hearing at the elementary, we have the same format that's happening at the, at the middle school. And, you know, you talk about, you know, Felicia mentioned analyzing some of the data. And the one thing about branching minds is it does some of that for us. So when you think about the graduation rate at the high school, once you start putting in the data, it automatically says, here are the students who are at risk for not graduating. So we don't have to wait till they get up to the high school to start thinking about it. We can see that information instantly. Once we put in the data and it'll flag and say, you know, this student needs our attention, this student needs our attention. And so we are just trying to create a system that is consistent throughout the district so that we can support our students, know what's working, what's not working, not keep recreating the wheel every time a student moves to the next grade level. And so you, you know, even if you looked at what's happening in the MTS at the elementary, you probably saw a lot of things that were similar. And that's the goal. We're trying to stop doing things so differently and start working together as a district.
I don't want to leave out high school either because we had others to speak, I'm not sure.
Super fast. We have an MTSS committee that has eight to 10 people on it and they tend to look at trend data. But then because of how we built our, the MTSS team, we then have enough representation from across the building that when we meet with a stu, for certain student, we have representation there that is from the MTSS to share. So like Mr. Reese was talking about, when we meet on the individual student, there's always one or two people from the MTSS team who looks at trend data, who's there guiding the discussion, leading the interventions, talking about when we're going to check back in next. So same, same kind of concept, following the lead from the other buildings, consistency.
And our central office staff also attends MTSS meetings as well. So they're part of the schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Like to have a few minutes, Dr. Russell.
Dr. Russell.
Before we move on to our next summer school session, like for him to speak on some things that he's been doing as well as part of, follow up from National Teacher of the Year, some activities you've been working with our students on.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, and good evening. Board members. First of all, it's good to be back. And so I just want to say thank you so much for your support during this year of service for me. As Dr. Hall mentioned, I have a, maybe a dual position this year. I'm still teaching, something that I'm so excited to do. I teach in the midday African American history and race, gender, oppression. And also I want to do something a little more district wide. And so I brainstormed with Dr. Hall over the summer. And my real passion is to try to support teachers and students as well. And so during the course of the day, my responsibility is to visit classrooms. I have six African American male students that I'm mentoring. The name of our mentoring group is called the FIRM. The FIRM stands for Forward Thinking Innovative Resilient Motivated Learners. And what we are trying to do this semester is focus on two benchmarks, attendance and classroom management. And so each one of those six students came up with a success plan. So how are we going to achieve this particular goal of theirs? And so far, it's a lot of work. So far, the students are participating very well. We meet every Tuesday from 10:50 to around 11:20. And I visit with each student every single day in every single classroom. So I spend maybe five to 10 minutes with every student in the classroom just to make sure that they're on task. I'm just messing everything up today. And then secondly, I'm mentoring teachers as well. I shouldn't say mentoring teachers, but like to say supporting teachers. And so each day I visit classroom where teachers invite me in just to be another set of eyes or another set of ears as well. And with this great opportunity I had this past year, I am able to reach out throughout the country to educators who are from pre-K all the way to high school teachers that are doing great work and trying to connect our teachers with them as well. The one thing about education this year is that it costs a lot of money when teachers are leaving the school district. And so I think our responsibility is to make sure that we retain teachers and that we mentor teachers as well. And so that's my responsibility, my quick spill, any questions I could answer. I don't want to take up too much of your time. So once again, mentoring students as well as mentoring or supporting teachers.
Quick question. How do you identify the six students that you're mentoring?
Yes, so my, year prior to my sabbatical, I recognized some students that I had my first year, when they was first year students. And I noticed that some students are struggling in school. There's many factors behind it, but are struggling. And what I want to do is try to reach those students in order for them to be better versions of themselves. And so I spoke with the guidance counselors and also with Dr. Hall and Mr. Nimony to try to hone in on those particular students. So really, it came from my last year of teaching, those students who I had when they was freshmen, because they are juniors, because I wanted to be with them for two years. So these are juniors that we will be in the program for two years and that's how I identified them.
Is there anything we can do to help support you in this endeavor?
Well, I really appreciate that. Right now, I just appreciate the opportunity to do this particular work. Every month, we have a PTA luncheon. And so we had a lunch today. Two students only showed up because of a field trip and so four of the other students left. But at the moment, no, I just appreciate the support. You know, our students are willing to participate. We just have to show them how to do so, how to be learners. And that's the struggle that we are facing right now with these six particular students. But at the same time, these six students are very eager to change and they are very willing to make a, a difference in their lives.
If you want me to bake something for one of those listeners?
I would love to do that. That would be wonderful. Are there any further questions I could answer?
We're just ecstatic to have you back.
Well, I'm happy to be back.
We're so proud of you, but.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hall.
We also will have Mr. Russell help out mentoring, recruiting as well, because we should start, we should start recruiting here shortly for new teachers coming in. So he'll be on a recruiting team as well, going visiting other schools. Okay. Next, we have our summer school update.
Stretch. Really quick. Thank you for being here so far and thank you teachers for your presentation. Thank you, you did excellent and Ms. Alec. I, I want to bring up Ms. Walters to talk about Kinder Camp.
Hello, everyone again. I was the Kinder Camp coordinator this summer. This is one of my favorite programs, summer programs that we offer. I've actually been part of it since it started a long time ago. So the purpose of Kinder Camp is to just transition our pre-K students into kindergarten, give them the opportunity to come into school, get acclimated to what our building looks like, what our hallways look like. Because this is a big place to a five year old. So Kinder Camp gives them that opportunity to come for two, they came for two weeks over the summer. We had two teachers and then two paras support the 20 students that signed up. They all came, they all signed up. Next year, I hope to double that. I would like to see all the kindergarten students enrolled in Kinder Camp because I really feel like it's an important program. We have a lot of fun. You can see on the bottom, there's some pictures. We set up tents for the camping room. We tried to do two themes. We had a camping theme and a beach theme. And, you know, we have umbrellas and beach chairs. And we try to make it a fun learning environment for them where they don't know that they're actually learning. So there's a lot of books that we read that are based on those themes and activities and we work on cutting and gluing. It's those foundational skills that are super important for our kids to have both when they come to school. So we had Mrs. Whitfield and Ms. Brown, Ms. Taylor and Mrs. Gunn, and they just did a fabulous job with all of our kindergarteners coming in. We were able to gather some assessment data. We got to have 20 out of our, about 60, 57 kindergarteners. We have 20 set of data points already before the start of the school year with uppercase letters, lowercase letters and sounds. It's a great jumping point for our kindergarten teachers to have that data to get started. So they can, and then we just, we will continue to collect that and help them throughout the rest of the year. So thank you very much for allowing this opportunity for Kinder Camp to happen. It is an incredible program and I hope that we can continue to do it every year. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thanks for helping coordinate as well.
One of the things we did this year is we had summer school towards the end of the year. We did, we started July 31st. And, and one of that is to give the teachers a break and give students a break. And we also allowed the, the students to go from, they were at playground to about July 26th and then summer school started July 31st. So from our K5 summer program, this, Ms. Pars sent this to us, thank you, Ms. Pars. And for reading, we concentrated on reading and math. You know, they did a lot of in-class. So, uh, from our K-five summer program, this, uh, Ms. Pars sent this to us, thank you, Ms. Pars, um, and for reading, we concentrated on reading and math, um, you know, they did a lot of in-class work, um, uh, student work, they, they, uh, they were able to write to the editor of the Science Magazine, which is pretty cool. In reading, they did a lot of summarizing, determining main ideas, um, the learning target was for the students to identify details to support main ideas. In math, um, they did, um, they always did what, which one doesn't belong, this activity was used to promote oral language, um, critical thinking skills and develop problem-solving skills. We used our I-Ready data to assess how students were, were doing, they, they did a pre-and post, in math, one hundred percent of the students grew from their pre-and post, and reading eighty-three percent, and that's, that was, that was K to five.
And how many students were in that K to five?
I think, uh, the total, summer school, I think it's a total of like forty that would actually come, the K to five, if it's roughly about, it was around ten students per class, so, I think ten, like, let me see, K, I have to count it, K, one, two, three, four, five. So, it was not ten, it was about, it was six to ten per class, so I don't have the exact number, but it'd be anywhere between forty to fifty students, between K to five.
And is that students that were invited, or anyone could sign up for that?
Anyone could sign up, but at first, we targeted students, like, hey, you need to come, you, you know, just made it real celebratory, not, you're not doing well in this, like, you, you have an opportunity to learn some skills, to do great things, we targeted people first, targeted those students first and then we opened it up to everybody. So, you can remember that time, when, when they asked, when I asked, hey, you wanna go to summer school, they'd be like, no, I don't wanna go to summer school, people were ready, they were done at that point. Six to eight, um, Ms. Molly Agnew and Lori Brewer did our, um, um, the math and, and reading, uh, math and language arts. The one thing I like about, um, the six to eight, they had the opportunity to switch, so, Ms. Agnew did strictly language arts, and then, Ms. Brewer did strictly math, as opposed to at K to five, they had to do both. The overview, um, the purpose of six to eight English lan, language arts, um, program was prepared to students for a successful school year, those are the standards they used. Students entering seventh grade, um, read and annotated their copies of Refuge, um, that was part of the summer reading, I think the knife writers had to do that reading too. So, this was some of the books that they, um, that they were able to choose from, um, they all were able to receive copies of books, we had extra books for them to choose from, which is really, really cool. So, oh, again, enrollment's like three to seven students, um, four were consistent for six to eight, um, again, they used pre-and post, many assessments, uh, for, for, um, for math and for reading both, we used many assessments for both, um, both, uh, subject areas. Again, math, um, we're using the I-Ready data, three to seven students, um, one hundred percent of those students grew from the beginning of the summer, um, session to the end, that was based on I-Ready and their evidence work samples that they did. Okay, they started each day with a combination academic and non-academic thinking, questioning and activities like logic puzzles and teamwork building and splitting numbers, variety of ways, I still working at the bottom. They moved from domains and standards throughout movement, they use scavenger hunts, technology, direct instruction, differentiated instruction, individual and small groups. At the high school level, um, they're, they're, they started a little earlier, June twenty-sixth to seven twenty-one, um, did Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, and that was primarily just credit recovery. So, there were about thirty-two students enrolled, twenty-six, even though it was online, we used the Apex Program, twenty-six, um, students still attended in-person. And from that assessment data, we had, we had thirty-seven courses completed throughout the summer, so that's those, so, um, and Josie Martin, Jay Ferguson, and David Jarvin helped us out a lot during that time. And finally, extended school year. I believe this is the last slide.
Yeah, you're almost there. This, uh, extended school year, or ESY, is a category for students with disabilities, um, and we look at students and their data throughout the year, and if there's certain times during the year, like, right now, we're collecting data on our students over the summer, if they have some IEP goals where they've regressed so much and it's taking so long to recoup where they were at the end of the year, that's a red flag for us that they might need some work next summer over extended school year time, that's what extended school year is for. Or, it could be for a student who's got an emerging skill, something that's just, we've been working, we've been working, they're starting to do it, we don't want ten weeks to go by in the summer where they don't have time to work on it. So, some of our students, um, may receive, um, some of our students went to a camp this summer because it was a lot for socialization, plus also some of their academic things, but they needed some help with, um, getting along with others and, and things like that. We have some in-house services, like our speech-language pathologist sometimes works with some students who, over their breaks, they're regressing so much that it's, it's too long of a time for them to go without during the summer. And sometimes it might be some, some students in some other locations, sometimes we do virtual things, um, and sometimes it's in-person, so there's just a variety of things we offer for our students with disabilities, but it's individual and it's based on data that either they're, they're just starting a skill or they've, their regression time over the summer, it's too big of a time, so, we work on that every summer as well.
So, none of this happens in our buildings, or some of it does?
It does happen in the district.
Okay.
We had approximately about ten students who, um, took advantage of some ESY services over the summer. Any questions?
We asked them all.
I guess then, then extended school year, that, that's at all grade levels?
It's for any student with a disability, um, but we have to have data to support that we need that, so our intervention specialists collect that during, at different times, like now, they're collecting it for over the summer, so, most, all students are gonna regress some over the summer, but then we look at how much time does it take to recoup? So, if they've regressed now, and then we say, okay, in two to three weeks, they're back to where they were or pretty close, then we're not worried about it, but if it's like two months from now and they're still not back to where they were in May, then we've got, it's too long of a time for them to go, then we know we've gotta be looking at some things. We also look at data over winter break and then over spring break as well. So, there's three different times.
Thank you, Sue, great job, questions?
No, but I wanna say thank you to every one of you, um, because this information was very important to all of us, but particularly to me, because I asked for most of this. You make references during the school year and during regular board meetings, and I'm thinking, okay, we can't really delve deep into this right now, there's lots of acronyms being thrown around, there's beautiful, wonderful kids that are presented to us, and in the back of my mind, I'm like, oh, my God, what are we doing about that? What's our progress on this, well, how is this being implemented, what are the details? And so, I really appreciate you putting the time and energy into providing those details to us and to staying with us until eight o'clock tonight for this information. I was gonna be here as long as it took for me to get a lot of these questions answered, and you answered almost all of them, I still got a couple, I'll deal with those later. In great detail, so, I feel really good about the status of things and that we have, we're implementing what we need to implement and we're working on MTSS and our kids are gonna be okay. So, thank you so very much, and we should've clapped a long time ago, so, thank you, I really appreciate it.
We just read it from Amisha's clapping.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for team as well, for, um, administrators, teachers, um, my whole central office staff work on these presentations, and I'll update the board once I find that one student, which I'll probably go to the house, um, sometime this week. So, um, thank you very much, enter report.
Um, so, future meetings, we have September twenty-sixth, a regular meeting at six PM here at the elementary school, October twenty-fourth, a regular meeting at six PM here at the elementary school, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Ms. Yum?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?